Going to call speed order. First item is the roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Baman.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alacore.
All right. Uh, next item will be invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll have Mr. Ryan up. He's a devotee of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening, uh, the time that you've given us to gather and carry out business to Green Valley. God, I pray that decisions that we make tonight, um, will be good for our residents, will be good for, uh, our employees, and, uh, good for the, uh, elected officials, um, when it comes to decisiveness and the choices of leadership that they have to make up here. God, I pray that you protect us all in the coming weeks, cure those that are sick, um, and, uh, protect those, uh, who service out on the road every day, our officers, firefighters, and EMS. Lord, I just pray that, uh, you'll be with those who weren't able to be with us tonight, uh, that you'll be here in spirit. In Jesus' name I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next item is approval of the agenda.
Uh, no changes, Mr. Ryan.
With that, see, no proclamations then, we'll move on to citizens' participation. We ask that citizens come forward to the podium and microphone and please address the board and give us, uh, your name and address for the record, please. Anyone wish to address the board this evening?
Name is Justin Cox. I'm the treasurer for the Ryan Meadows Homes Association. Uh, address is eight oh six southwest Mill Creek Court.
Yeah, do you want to, you can go ahead and talk now if you're... You don't want to talk when we get to the panel?
Give your opinion now.
What? Yeah, do we manage dressing now? I mean, is it the, uh, the pool?
The pool, yes.
Okay, yeah, you can go ahead and dress now.
Well, first of all, I just received word of this being discussed tonight, this afternoon, um, and I'm a little concerned because you, it's putting stipulations on private entity that we now have to have public review of our facility that's been in operation for over ten years. We now have to pay a hundred and fifty dollar license fee in order to operate it. We have to have a county inspector come out to inspect it at least twice a year. We have a bunch of reports we have to fill out, and I don't see how that's beneficial to the city when it's a private entity. If we're managing our own pool, we've never had an incident with the health department, so I just don't get how you can, you guys will, are willing to impose that on private entities like homeowners associations just because somebody says we have to do it. That's my concern.
Okay. Next, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? All right, see, now move on to the citizen's agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the citizen's agenda.
I'd like to move, Alderman West, approve the citizen's agenda. Drive a second.
Second.
Second over Baman. Any discussions? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same time.
See no previous business, new business, presentations, or public hearings, we'll move on to ordinances.
Bill B seventeen dash twenty-five, second reading, ordinance amending the budget, City of Green Valley, Missouri fiscal year two thousand seventeen. Will be ordinance two four two six, second reading.
Mayor, I move that we approve B seventeen dash twenty-five for its second reading and making it ordinance twenty-four twenty-six.
I have motion, Alderman West, approve bill B seventeen dash twenty-five for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four twenty-six. Drive a second.
Second.
Second over Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, we discussed, uh, this ordinance last week and the purpose of it. Just remind you, this is to, uh, balance books before, uh, year end. We had, uh, no overages or surpluses. It's really just to clean up the, the debt service and TIP projects, uh, for bookkeeping matters. The one item that I will draw your attention to that we spoke about at the last meeting is the, uh, Parks and Recreation Fund. Uh, revenues and expenditures are accurately reflected so that it did not show negative balance. Um, be happy to entertain any questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same time. Arnold.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
Baman.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Six zero mayor. Bill B seventeen dash twenty-six, second reading. Will be ordinance two four two seven. It is an ordinance approving the two thousand eighteen fiscal year budget, comprehensive fee schedule, and compensation plan, City of Green Valley, Missouri. Second reading, ordinance two four two seven.
Mayor, I move that we, B seventeen dash twenty-six for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four twenty-seven.
I have motion, Alderman West, approve bill B seventeen dash twenty-six for its second reading.
Making ordinance twenty-four twenty-seven. Drive a second.
Okay.
Second over Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, you guys are very familiar with this one as well, uh, but with it being the second and final read, um, I'd just like to point out this will be our operating budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Uh, we held budget work sessions on this, public, for the public and for the, uh, board on October twenty-fourth, November first, and November thirteenth. Uh, attached to it is the line item summary, the comprehensive fee schedule, the compensation plan, and the two thousand eighteen organizational chart. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or discussions? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same time. Arnold.
Yes.
Baman.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Totten.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Bill B seventeen dash twenty-seven. Uh, it's on, on the agenda for two readings tonight. Um, first, and it's an ordinance approving the purchase by the City of Green Valley, Missouri, real property from State Bank of Missouri, and authorizing the city administrator to execute all necessary documents required to effectuate and close said transaction, including the budget amendment to allow for purchase. First reading, bill B seventeen dash twenty-seven.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B seventeen dash twenty-seven for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by time of law.
I have motion, Alderman Coleman, accept bill B seventeen dash twenty-seven for its first reading, bring it back by time of law for its second reading. Drive a second.
Okay.
Second over Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, as you re, will recall, we've, we've spoke about this property several times over the year, over the years. Uh, in October, State Bank approached, uh, me again and asked if the city would be interested in the property. Uh, I visited with you an executive session, and, uh, the board authorized me to negotiate, um, a two, do not exceed amount, uh, of forty-five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars per lot. Um, that had been the counter offer after several rounds, that was the, uh, final counter from State Bank. Uh, and according to Mr. Smith, their board, uh, actually was, were, their, their final and best offer was going to be, uh, twenty thousand per lot, but, uh, with the promise from, uh, the city that we could close before the end of two thousand seventeen, that was appealing enough for them to just go ahead and drop another fif, uh, five thousand. Uh, so what I'm trying to say is fifteen thousand was their best and final offer, uh, after trying to beat him up for quite some time over it, and that is what we agreed to. So, this ordinance is just, uh, it's on for a double reading tonight, obviously, because we need to close before year end, and it is, uh, authorizing me as the city administrator to execute the contract and all closing documents, uh, to purchase the property, take possession of it, and place it into holding for economic development, uh, uh, projects. You will see that the cost as recommended is forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, that just includes five hundred dollars for any closing costs that we will sh, uh, share with the seller, and the, uh, expense is coming out of fund balance from the tourism tax fund, so there will be no impact to the general fund. Uh, it's, it's being transferred, actually, as part of this ordinance, there's a budget amendment strictly transferring the money from fund balance, uh, into an expenditure line item of one seventy.
Any questions or questions? All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same time. First reading, six zero. Second reading, ordinance B seventeen twenty-seven. Will be ordinance two four two eight. It is an ordinance approving the purchase by the City of Green Valley, Missouri, real property from State Bank of Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute all necessary documents required to effectuate and close said transaction, including the budget amendment to allow for purchase. Second reading, ordinance two four two eight.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill number B two four two eight for its second reading, making it ordinance number, I'm sorry, let me back that up. I move that we accept bill number B, uh, seventeen dash twenty-seven for its second reading, making it ordinance number B two four two eight.
I have motion, Alderman Coleman, to approve, uh, bill B seventeen dash two seven for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four twenty-eight. Drive a second.
Second.
Second over Totten. Any discussion? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All both same time. Totten.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Baman.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Six zero mayor. Next item is Resolution seventeen dash forty. Resolution about the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator to amend the agreement for environmental services between the City of Green Valley and Jackson County, Missouri, to include aquatic venue inspections. Resolution R seventeen dash forty.
Sorry about that. I was reading. Move we accept Resolution seventeen dash forty as read?
I have motion, Alderman Kelly, to approve Resolution R seventeen dash forty. Drive a second.
Second.
Second over Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, we spoke about this several times. The item was, uh, actually tabled at the November thirteenth meeting so that we could, uh, reach out to, uh, first, uh, so we could gather more information and bring it back to the board. Uh, and, uh, upon that discussion, uh, we decided to reach out to the commercial establishments and the homeowners associations as they were the ones that were impacted by this Jackson County ordinance, uh, and give them a chance to come tonight and speak. I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Davies, uh, kind of kick it off, and I see that Ms. Sees was here as well for questions, and, uh, I would imagine between, uh, Shannon and Deb that we could probably answer, uh, with Justin. Justin's questions or any concerns that he may have. Go ahead, Shannon.
Um, and really, I know we've spent a couple of meetings, uh, discussing this, and, and I really don't have anything further, um, to provide in relation to this program. Um, we did, uh, provide, uh, this document to those that were impacted in Green Valley. We had, uh, difficulty, um, finding a contact for Ryan Meadows. I didn't even know there was an HOA till this morning. Finally got in touch with the developer who develops an HOA, who provided a number, but not a name, and then that's when I called Mr. Cox this morning and found out that there was an HOA, but, uh, and he's our, he's the treasurer, and then quickly emailed this document to him, but, um, Woodbury HOA, Rosewood HOA received this, uh, Tuesday of last week, as well as covered in, uh, Great Value and Bristol Park and, uh, Creekside Village. And so, in essence, those are those entities, uh, other than the Great Valley Aquatic Center that we, we have here at the, uh, outside the community center that, uh, falls under the realm of this aquatic venue inspection program. Obviously, this is not applied to private homeowner pools that are in their backyard where they're not to the public or to a member, uh, or to a, you know, a resident or something of that nature. So, anyway, we just wanted to try to get that information out to those impacted here in Green Valley by this, and, uh, as you all had requested, to try to have a representative from Jackson County Environmental Health here at the next meeting in case there was any additional questions, um, which we have to see here with this tonight, so I'll just open it up to anybody that has any question.
And, and looking at what was in the paperwork here, this looks more like we're making an agreement with Jackson County to perform this service. Is that, is that what this is, is just a...
Yeah, and this, this is an amendment to an, you know, I guess, an existing, uh, resolution that was passed back in two thousand and seven, which included the food sanitation program and wastewater management, um, bringing it between the city and the county. So this is now adding the aquatic venue inspection program to that existing ordinance.
So it's not actually an ordinance that we're passing, or an adoption of the Jackson County ordinance, is it just a, we're...
Ours is a resolution, I'm sorry I said ordinance, but...
Yeah, resolution or whatever, but it's, it's basically just a, a, a legal agreement for them to provide this service inside our community.
Yeah, I mean, in essence, I, I think moving forward, Jackson County wanted to provide this information, letting those towns in Jackson County know that they're gonna be implementing this program. And so, kind of out of, uh, out of courtesy, courtesy, they provided this to us, and we saw that we have an existing agreement via resolution with all those other items. That's why we brought it here to add this one to it. So at this point, Jackson County's moving forward with this, next, this next year.
I think maybe to answer your question specifically, so this is more like an intergovernmental cooperative agreement. Um, Jackson County has the authority to perform these services within the corporate limits of, of Green Valley, um, similar to, uh, state statute. You know, highway patrolmen can ride a ticket within Green Valley because of, of the state statute. Uh, Jackson County's ordinance carries, uh, authority, uh, throughout the entire county, not just the unincorporated areas. And the general practice in the past is that, uh, to be a good neighbor, good partner, that we enter into these, uh, cooperative agreements, acknowledging, yes, uh, Jackson County, you are going to provide this service, but we would like you to, to let us know what exactly you're going to be, you know, uh, providing to our residents. So it's, uh, sometimes can be form over substance. Uh, if the board did not enter into the agreement, Jackson County still would have the authority and the right to perform the inspections and collect the fees, uh, it's just to not be under a cooperative treatment.
I, I just, this, we discussed it when it was first bought up, almost a year ago, that it had a little bit of a, a flavor to, a revenue generating process, uh, whether they're gonna be doing these inspections of businesses and stuff. And, uh, I'm, I'm not always a fan of getting more government involved in, in private industry. So, for those reasons, I, I didn't like this and don't like this. It's, uh, we, if we had had a number of incidents or any instance where these facilities weren't being run properly, you know, maybe something like this would be needed, but they have enough personal liability that if they're not running their facilities properly, that, that's the biggest hammer on them probably, is the lawsuit that would come down, uh, over them not maintaining it properly and keeping it safe by, by the standing. Um, so, uh, I, I just, it's something I can't put my finger on, but it's not something that, that, that feels right compared to the, the people in center community. To have another expense, another government agency asking them for paperwork and, and belving into their time that they're gonna have to come up with all this information and record keeping. And then they had it, just another expense, whatever, because most of them probably have a, a professional service taking care of their pool, but they're gonna have to pay that professional service person to come up with all these documents and make copies and, and submit them to the, to the county and so forth, so... Uh, it may be moot that they're gonna do it no matter what, uh, I just don't know if I can, I can support it. Add more government control over, over it.
Where do they give you a copy of the report when they go through?
If we ask for it, they maintain it at their office. If we ask for it, we can obtain everything they do offer.
So that when they...
We spend, we spend over five thousand dollars a year maintaining our pool. We're a professional company, so...
Uh, Ms. Sees, I don't know if you can, if you can speak to the liability, and I, I certainly hear Alderman Arnold with, what your concern is, and, and Justin as well. Uh, I think the intent, uh, of this ordinance was simply to ensure, uh, public safety through monitoring, uh, swimming pools that are used as an attraction benefit or a commercial draw, um, similar to, you know, a, a health, uh, a food handler's permit or something like that. We haven't, I'm, I'm unaware of any, uh, issues that we've had with, uh, public or commercial swimming pools, but I can tell you, uh, on the other hand, when, when you hear about, um, you know, a, a person that's gotten sick from a waterborne illness or bacteria, microbe, whatever, uh, you wonder, you know, what steps we're taking to prevent that. Deb, do you have any, uh...
When we first started this process last year, and I came before you all to ask for your support in this ordinance, uh, before the county actually passed the ordinance, we, we talked about this and you guys offered your support. I handed out a document that did go over different illnesses that had happened that were related to pool water. So we did have incidents that were reported to the Jackson County Health Department, and there was a report that was out that, that I gave to you at that time, um, that showed which pools were involved and, uh, where people reported they got swam in that, that became ill. And you have to remember that when something's reported, that means there were probably five to ten that didn't report that also got sick. Uh, it doesn't get reported unless you go to a doctor. So, you know, we wanted to do this ordinance for public health, for the safety of the citizens in Jackson County, and we are one of the only jurisdictions in Missouri that does not do this at this time.
Uh, Shannon had previously commented that, uh, other counties, both on the hands of the Missouri side, have a program, uh, like this that's monitored by, uh, by the, the local health or, or county jurisdiction. Um, you know, approximately how many, I'm putting you on the spot here, if you don't have an answer, that's fine. You know, approximately how many pools will be impacted in Jackson County by this?
Um, we know for sure of three hundred, but I just know about this one.
Okay, so three hundred and one.
Yep.
Another horrible attempt to humor.
The number's gonna grow, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay. How much time do you foresee spending on the application?
We'll have more inspectors during the summer.
So to do a swimming pool, uh, be, you know, process the application administratively and go out and do the inspection, do you have a ballpark of how many hours it would take to do that for one swimming pool?
I haven't broke it down like that. I, we, we know the cost of the program is gonna be about a hundred and ten thousand dollars per inspector. We're not gonna take in near that.
Yeah, I was just trying to quantify, you know, to, to the board, uh, the cost relative to the time that the county, uh, spends. I know, I know that the county's budget, um, and a hundred thousand is a drop in the bucket, uh, compared to the type of money that you guys do.
Not in our budget.
Right, you're right, yeah, no, it's significant, but on, on the grand scheme, it's, it's, um, i- it's not gonna be providing raises for county employees or buying new, uh, vehicles. It's, it, it seems like a program that will support itself.
No, I, the, the county's actually throwing money in because this amount will take in on the permit will come close to covering.
And just clearly on the, the fees, uh, the venue permit, which is good for the year's a hundred and fifty, and then really the only other fee that we'd be talking about, cer, the certification for having a certified pool operator there.
Right. They need to have a certified pool operator, but if you're using a company like E-Wake or, uh, Slimings or something like that, they would need a certified operator, so you wouldn't need another certification.
And that's, if, if, Melvin, if, if you were to get the certification to the county, if you already have it, obviously, there's no need, but the certification...
Um, Kansas City has a, a program where they do a training for fifty dollars. We're not gonna start off with training.
Okay.
They, we wanna kind of ease into that part.
I have a comment. Mr. Hunt, you, you mentioned that, uh, you know, this is an intergovernmental cooperative agreement, so to speak. Just so, you know, you're aware, I'm, Mr. Cox, um, I think I recall a conversation that Shannon, you had mentioned in several of the meetings, we discussed this, that, uh, you and several other municipalities worked together once you got the initial document to make it better, streamline it for the communities themselves, so it wasn't so, uh, maybe so harsh on those communities. So I don't know that that, uh, gets rid of all your concerns, but there, uh, you know, there was a lot of discussion to make sure it wasn't overreached to Mr. Arnold's standpoint as well, so, uh, can you speak to that in the board?
Right, yeah. Initially, when we received the initial draft of this from Jackson County, there was, there was some concerns, uh, and a lot of it was from your local Jackson County, or your local park and recreation agencies in Jackson County. Um, and I know, just kind of on the front end, us and Oak Road and Lee Summit and Blue Springs, uh, park and recreation employees kind of met to go over this and, and with some of the concerns that we had and, uh, some questions that we needed to have answered. And thankfully enough, Jackson County was willing to, to meet with those individuals as well as, and I don't know who all was at that meeting. We had some HOA representatives and, and some other places that weren't specifically park and recreation employees, and sat down, uh, one afternoon out of their facility and actually went through the entire document. And Jackson County was, was really good about working with us and, and kind of tweaking a few things, dropping a few things. Um, and I think, uh, Ms. Sees even said, once Jackson County implements this, that, that some of the stuff, they're, they're, they're not gonna be real hard, hard on and, and make these, uh, facility operators toe the line. They're gonna do everything in their power to kind of gradually ease in, uh, you know, to a lot of this stuff. But, um, once we had that, that meeting and went through that, um, everybody at the table was, was pretty happy with the finalized finished document, which is what you all have for you, uh, tonight. Again, you know, I, I don't think you can, um, stress the importance of, of a safe swimming environment and having a third party oversee that, similar to a third party overseeing how food is prepared at McDonald's or, you know, how, uh, the vending machines at Casey's are, are being operated or, or cleaned or, or whatever, or our concession stands here, uh, within, within the city. And I like in really this program too, uh, you know, your, your food establish permits and your, your food handlers programs. Um, this is, this is pretty similar to this, where you've got people, uh, from your community that are residents and or members of an athletic club, of an apartment complex, of an HOA, all coming into one, you know, facility. Um, and to have these measures in place where you have, uh, an entity that... And to have these measures in place where you have an entity that knows what they're looking for and what needs to be addressed and maintained, in my opinion, is a win-win, especially when all you're really talking about is one hundred and fifty dollars for the year and a fifty dollar certification. And that is if you're a pool company that maintains your pool doesn't already have that. And so, I think the benefit far outweighs the cost. And as you can see with the fees involved, it's, I've talked with Evan about this as well. That just doesn't work out to where this is going to be a big revenue generator for the county.
Shannon, I had a couple of questions for you. First of all, Deb, I apologize, come back to you for a second. Deb, how many, can you tell me of the three hundred and one pools that you just mentioned? Approximately how many are private and how many are municipalities?
Okay, so you wanna know which ones, how many city-owned pools we have? Is that what you wanna-
Right, and how many are, how many are run by municipalities and how many are run by-
Like pools that are in gyms and hospitals and stuff like that, I wouldn't consider public.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't consider them semi-public.
Right.
HOAs, we consider semi-public. The city-owned pools, we have, I think six in Elite Summit. I don't believe Blue Springs has one anymore. Oak Grove is closing there. You have your, Graham New has one. And Gray Town has Super Splash, which has like four different pools inside.
So, the majority of them, it sounds like, are semi-private or private, right? All right, thank you very much, and let's move back over. On the, on the homeowner associations that you contacted, how many of them communicated with you?
Let's see, I spoke with a Sandy Turner for Rosewood and Woodbury. And then she in turn contacted Elite Pool because Elite Pool services both of those. I was not able to talk with anybody from Creekside. That document was sent to them. And then the only other HOA would have been Ryan Meadows.
And what was the response from Sandy?
I don't know if it was either one way or the other. I mean, I think she wasn't aware of the aquatic venue program, but she was happy to receive that so that she could then pass it on to the boards of both HOAs. Even if you get on either one of their websites, you'll see her listed on there and her contact information. And so, she was making sure that that got sent to boards as well as to Elite Pools, who maintains both of them.
And how long ago was that?
Been Tuesday, last Tuesday.
So, I'm just wondering if they had enough time to disseminate that information to the boards to where they had the opportunity to really understand what that was. My concern again, I kinda get both sides. I, Alderman Arnold brings up some very good points for me. I, I'm not a big fan of government getting involved that much with the private industry. If they're doing the right things. And to your point earlier, Deb, and I apologize for calling you by your first name, I don't know your last name. When you were mentioning some illnesses, I'm taking for granted that you met here local that there were some illnesses reported from some of, you don't have to mention who, but if there's somebody from our community had some illnesses from a, from a pool that was used by the community in some fashion. I have, again, I'm on both sides of the fence. I understand your point, Mr. Cox, but at the same time, I, safety is an issue. It's a tough one for me as well, because I certainly get your point of view.
Could you kinda walk, I mean, I'm trying to envision what this inspection's gonna look like. I know like, when you do a restaurant inspection, there's a manager or an owner or somebody there responsible. But some of these, these pools, at the time you go inspect it, may not have someone there.
Well, we've talked to the pool company.
Okay, so it'll be like a scheduled tour?
And we probably accompany them on their regular visits to the pool.
Okay, if that's how you do it, okay. I was kinda wondering how you do it, okay. So, it'd be like a scheduled tour?
Yeah, we don't want people to have to take off records to be there.
Yeah.
And we all have cell phone numbers that we can leave so that that person, if they have questions that's in charge of the pool, can call us in the evening or whatever to ask those questions. But yeah, we will accompany the pool company.
Okay. So, that way you need to, they'll have the records and everything you need.
Right.
Okay.
And we did talk to the pool companies and they said that they do keep the records that we're asking for, that they have to keep those in every other jurisdiction here. So, for the health department inspection, so it was nothing new to them.
Alderman Baman?
In our packets, on the two hundred and thirteenth page, there are some requirements that are identified. One references failure to meet lifeguard requirements.
You must have a draft copy there. We took the requirement for lifeguard out of category two and three. So, the only people that are required to have lifeguards are the city-owned.
Alderman Baman, is there a page number at the bottom of the actual PDF?
There is, it's thirty-five.
So, you contract, I'm sorry.
I apologize for the general nature of this question. Are there other elements of these requirements that would impose a financial penalty of sorts to these more private pools that you could maybe recall that might have been removed from the requirements?
Well, we took out the lifeguard requirement and we also put in, we tried to get this in the actual ordinance that are legal, that just make it a policy because it's only gonna be the first year. But after the first inspection, we're gonna give six months to become compliant, which your outdoor pools aren't open that long, so you basically gave a year to become compliant. And that should give the HOA time to budget for it. Anything that, if there's some kind of equipment that they just don't have that's required or we do require some first aid equipment and stuff like that, but it's a pretty minimal expense on that.
Like an AED or are you just talking about like the structures and the different things that you see sometimes with public pools?
I think you're required to have mandates, neophorines.
Basic help, first aid kits and stuff.
Stuff like that, I, you know, there's a pretty basic list in here of what you have to have, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Alderman Baman, on page thirty-five, you've made reference to, and it probably doesn't explain it real well, but it does mention failure to meet lifeguard requirements. Obviously, that would be under the realm of those municipal ran pools such as ours where we are required to have lifeguards because of the size of our, of our facility.
Actually, that I was getting ready to clarify, because of the draft that we, that we have under four zero five one dot nine, section in subsection four, it lists that failure to meet lifeguard requirements. And this is related to any spa, hot tub, or whirlpool bath. So, that's still, in those situations, there is still a requirement for. I wanna make sure that the board has the most recent version here.
Now, for whirlpools, I've got lifeguard requirements for whirlpools.
If the city has one, but it's only required if the city has one.
Yeah, there's two categories. There's a category one, which references municipality specific. The category two, which is basically your hotel, hotel, HOAs, apartment complexes and so forth. I only mention it because I wanna make sure that you guys know that you all do have the correct draft in front of you.
So, the lifeguard provision is only, sorry? Oh, I'm very sorry, go ahead.
My understanding was that you contract with an outside company to do the inspection?
No, we have inspectors that will do the inspection.
So, how many total inspectors do we have in the county then?
Well, our food inspectors will double and do the pools summertime. We're reworking our schedule and we're hiring more people. So, total, I'll have eight inspectors that are available to do those inspections. Because obviously, when the season starts, there'll be a lot of inspections to do.
Yeah, and I just wanna, I'm gonna make sure, like, a question in the gallery.
In reading through this, unless I completely misunderstood, I do believe it says in there we have to have daily pH logs for our pool. And for an entity like ourselves, who gets our pool serviced three times a week, we gotta have it something daily. That means we gotta have our service company come out every single day and take pH reading, log it in. Instead of spending five thousand dollars on our pool maintenance, we're now spending ten thousand dollars. Sixty-five dollars a day for our pool service to come out and service.
Have you talked to your pool company about that?
No, we have not, like I said, I just found out about this this afternoon.
Because that was something that they brought up in the meeting that we had at our office. And it's the pool company who are there. And they said that they had a plan in place for that that would not be, that would be very costly effective for the HOA.
Probably, Mr. Cox, you probably have no clue, I'm not ready to ask you, but do you have any idea what kind of impact it would have on, like, your HOAs? I mean, granted, I don't really know what's gonna cost yet, but, I mean, you would probably have, essentially say you would probably have to raise their fee somewhat in order to-
Yep.
It's possible too that you could get a pH meter and do that yourself. On the days that the pool company's not there, I mean, it's very simple to take a pH. And that's something that we can show you how to do and a pH meter is less than a hundred dollars.
We're now having to do a bunch of things that we have not had to do for twelve years just because we're enacting something to ensure safety, which we've done on our own for twelve years. That's my point.
Shannon, just to clarify, if we both know, Jackson County can still come and do these inspections regardless, right? And charge the next state directly, or what they're gonna do anyway, regardless of what other contract, is that correct?
Yes. I think it'd be similar to you all amend the existing resolution not wanting the county to come in and provide the food sanitation program to restaurants and so forth. We decided not to have them do that anymore. They would still have the authority by law to continue to do that.
So, by them coming to us and at least engaging us, you've had the opportunity of your peers to at least make this better. Now, is it completely perfect at this point? Maybe not, it sounds like there might be some other things that need clarified. But is there an opportunity to review this going forward, to modify it after we go through this for a year, Ms. Sees?
Of course there is. I mean, that's how we learn. I mean, until we actually start doing the inspections, we don't know what we're gonna come up against. So, you know, and our food tips that we inspect the restaurants by changes all the time. So, yeah, I, there's always the ability to change something.
Because I, when you're saying if we're not in compliance, so, Mr. Cox's HOA, my HOA, Rosewood's HOA, if they, if they don't meet compliance, they've got six months to comply, which probably puts you in the middle of winter.
So, they actually have a year.
Yeah, so, you know, to Alderman Arnold's point, you know, having more government isn't what everyone wants. But at the same time, you guys have the authority to do this regardless of what we say up here. But along with that, I don't wanna, if it's a hundred and fifty dollars, that's one thing. If it's, you know, you're doubling the cost of the pool services come out to every HOA, well, that's gonna impact a lot, a lot of folks from that standpoint, not just a hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, if you break that down to a HOA, that's a dollar a household possibly. But if you start talking two, three, four thousand dollars, that becomes a little more significant to the HOA.
And I think you'd have to probably, I guess, talk to the pool maintenance company that comes out and does it. I know in Woodbury, Elite Pool's out every morning. During the pool operating season, they're out and I'm sure you've probably seen, seen them coming in and out of work. So, daily they are there regardless, addressing the pool, which is probably what needs to be done. And so, in essence, if you're paying the pool contractor to perform these services daily, they're there. Any additional steps that they're taking that they're not now, that they will have to as part of this program, which is a good thing, they can do on as part of their normal historical routine, daily visit to the facility. Now, again, that's, I'm not speaking specifically of Woodbury. And I don't know, different HOAs may be set up as far as the frequency of that pool contractor coming out and addressing the pool. But at least from what I've seen in my own neighborhood, I know they're out there every morning. So, they would not be coming out and making any extra visits. There may be more that they need to do with the existing visits that they have now. And hopefully not, and if not, then that tells you that they're doing it right.
And I think the other concern, I think it's brought up, when did the HOA get it? I mean, we asked you to give the HOA's old information, but HOAs only meet once a year, at least ours does, I think. So, it's not like they got a lot of time to, you know, turn through this every other week or whatever, but.
Yeah, I would say that majority of them are gonna find out a clueless this is going on. And something we haven't touched on is that, while we do have two inspections a year that are done, people that have run pools and had pools know due to sun, due to rain, and other situations, you can have variances in your chemical levels in your pools that can change drastically. And when the service has to be where they come in and do an inspection on one of those times, you're gonna get dinged because you're not meeting the chemical levels in that pool. And there's a stipulation in here that that keys another inspection with an additional hundred dollar fee to do that inspection. And I would hope that wouldn't happen very often, but if it did happen very often, you're raising a considerable cost there if that happened two, three more times a year or whatever. So, it's a possibility there that it could go on and be another cost that the, that they could handle.
Can I address that real quick? We did change in our procedures because that was something that you brought up last time when I came here to talk to you about supporting this ordinance. We did change that in our procedures. If a pool is closed because the chemicals are off, there's no reinspection fee. We don't charge, when we close a restaurant because they have too many violations, we don't charge a reinspection fee to reopen them. If you fix the problem and you get reopened, there's no reinspection fee. If there has to be a reinspection for something that doesn't cause a closure, then you get one reinspection that you don't get charged for. If we have to come back a second time, that's when you get a reinspection fee. So, if we tell you how to fix the problem and you don't fix it, when we come back, then you get charged a reinspection fee. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? So, you know, and basically, I mean, most people, once you tell them that there's a problem, they fix it. You're done.
Well, I just came out of an organization, we do six, seven thousand inspections a year, and we never charge the public a penny for our inspections. And so I, I don't understand charging fees for some of this, especially if there's not an expense. You got the expense of the people, but, you know. We don't get anything for inspections. We get taxes, just the same as the health department.
One thing that I, one that tried to clear up was related to the minimum testing standards. The minimum testing standards. Mr. Cox had mentioned the daily testing that's required. I did notice in operating records it talks about those requirements. It says a testing minimum of two times a day or as often as needed to maintain the water quality as indicated in this section. So is that a minimum? They have to be checked at least twice a day and possibly more? Because I know for spa and operating, spa and swimming...
Which number are you on?
This is page thirty-seven. It's four zero five one dot one three. For hot tubs, spas, and swimming pools, you know, the standard, at least the residential standard, is to check your chemical levels once, once, twice a week, or twice, I'm sorry, every one to two weeks. So is this, is this suggesting that they could be spaced out to a weekly period based off of the results? I mean, if the chemical stability maintains, is, is that what, what sets the standard for how often they have to test?
Um, there's a lot of things that set that standard. I, you know, obviously sun affects chemicals, affects chemicals. But, you know, that's something that we would have to see after some time.
Well, I know some of this is gray area. I just want to try and clear up as much. You know, this has been an ongoing dialogue for quite a while. I just want to clear up as, as much, as many misconceptions as possible. Make sure everybody understands what it is. I think from the city's perspective, it is a public health issue, which is why staff supported this. I, I hear your concern, Alderman Arnold, about, you know, if they come out and they get shut down because the chemicals are off, but that is precisely the point of the program, is keep children and users out of, out of swimming pools that, that don't have the proper chemical balance. You know, the city requires every private swimming pool that's over thirty-six inches deep to have a four-foot locking gate installed around it, which is a much more cost prohibitive measure for the public safety than, you know, a hundred and fifty dollar fee with inspections. I understand the burden and the concern, especially yours, Mr. Cox. I totally hear what you're saying and I get it. I personally, from the city's perspective, I think that it's a great idea to have somebody overseeing the use of these swimming pools to make sure that they are compliant and that we don't have, you know, levels not getting checked and somebody goes and goes swimming and gets some sort of water boil illness. So, again, that's, you know, originally that's why we came to the board, supporting this and recommending this, this intergovernmental agreement. And staff still does support the resolution, but ultimately this, this is a call of the elected officials. And we just want to make sure that we provide the factual information. That way, everybody understands what we're looking at and you make your decision based off of those.
Do we HOA have a private company come in and take care of this pool?
Yeah, Mr. Cox, who takes care of your swimming pool?
Elite.
Elite does? Okay. Yeah, so he uses the same one that I think two of the other HOAs do. So in this case, I would imagine that Elite, in your case, Elite would be probably the permit holder. And they would gather the required documentation and make sure that, you know, that's, the records are kept for the appropriate amount of time. And of course, they're going to pass the fee along to the HOA.
Can I ask a question? I didn't grasp, who doesn't have to have a lifeguard? I mean, private homes, I could understand.
We made it a recommendation that any pool over two thousand foot has a lifeguard. But originally, we had said that any pool over two thousand foot had to have lifeguard. Now, we just made it a recommendation. So there's three categories. So category one is the city pool, and it's required of the city pool to have lifeguard. Category two is our HOAs and the apartment complexes and places like the gyms and that kind. And that is a recommendation for them. It's not required.
See, I'd be more afraid for a place that's got open to the public, even your home association. I would think they would want a lifeguard.
We can't afford to have a lifeguard.
I couldn't afford swimming pool.
To pay a lifeguard to sit in our pool twenty-four, you know, during all hours of the day, that would way exceed our, our budget for our community. If we were required to have a lifeguard on, on site at all times, we'd simply close our pool. We would not be able to perform.
Well, I'd hate to see a child die and then, then you need a lifeguard, but okay.
That's where a parent comes in, the whole parents.
I've seen him.
Any additional discussion or questions?
I just have one more thing to say, and then I'll be quiet for a second. If something were to happen at our pool and someone were to get sick, the city and the county still had zero liability for what happens at our pool. We're simply paying somebody to manage our liability that we already do on our own. And I don't think that's fair, that we have to, we have to pay somebody to say our pool is safe when we already do it, take our own steps to make sure our pool is safe. They're not going to accept any liability. They come, if they were to come out and inspect our pool, say it's safe, and then the next day, somebody gets sick in our pool, that's on us. That's not on them. So why do we have to pay for it?
Anything else? Eighty-nine, excuse me, all fair, please say aye.
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 Also the same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone call us.
Hammond?
Yes.
West?
No.
Henley?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Arnold?
No.
Cotton?
Yes.
Three-three? Mayor?
Uh, no.
Four-three? Resolution R seventeen dash forty-five, a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Grand Valley, Missouri, adopting the two thousand eighteen twenty-two Grand Valley Capital Improvements program. Resolution R seventeen dash forty-five.
I vote, I move that we accept resolution number R seventeen forty-five as read.
I have motion to approve resolution R seventeen dash forty-five. From Cotton, second, taking over.
All right.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I'm going to let Mr. Arroyo review the two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two capital improvements program that you're reviewing for approval tonight.
Well, what you have before you is a copy of the capital improvements program, as Ryan mentioned, that covers projects that we have planned over a five-year period. Keep in mind, this is a fluid document, so things can change, scopes can change in those projects. This has gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have approved it as well as the Park Board. And I'll let Shannon talk a little bit more about the park projects in particular. But just kind of give you a general overview. What this contains is parks projects, public works projects, water and sewer projects. Those include transportation projects as well. Essentially, some of the projects that you'll see include some of the downtown improvement projects that are still slated. Even though we did do an overlay for those projects, those projects are still intended to have reconstruction, so they're still in the plan. And some of these projects are undefined in terms of budget just because the money hasn't necessarily been defined where we're going to get that for that project. However, and also some of these projects are moved into the beyond category, which means they don't have a specific date. One of the, one of the things that we do with this particular plan is to have an outline of the type of projects that we want to make sure that we keep in the log in the event grant opportunities come up or federal funding ever comes up. We want to make sure that we have a plan in place to show that these are the projects that we see as critical for infrastructure and or future needs. And so go ahead and let Shannon talk a little bit about the projects that the Park Board had reviewed.
In your copy, copy of the capital improvements program, you'll see those projects that start with the letters P and R, obviously parks and recreation. Those are park and recreation projects that we have as part of the CIP. The projects that you have seen listed in here were, in essence, discussed, reviewed, discussed again over numerous meetings among the Park Board. And so the projects you see listed there are those that were reviewed and approved by our Grand Valley Park Board. You'll see the majority of these projects are recreational trails or, or in essence, walkways in general. Again, this follows suits with our adopted Trails Master Plan that was adopted back in two thousand eight, which was a big emphasis in this community in making the community a more walkable environment. Not all of these are recreational trails. Some of these may be listed in here as walkways adjacent to a creek or a roadway. They may be from a ten-foot wide recreational trail to a five-foot wide sidewalk. We try to look at what community development has as far as their transportation needs and future projects. For example, one of the projects in the Parks Capital Improvements Program was a recreational trail from southwest Eagles Parkway North to the movie theater. Again, that was part of their, their project in the street downtown improvements and the I-70 interchange that we were able to coordinate with them in getting this recreational trail on the east side of the road. And so that was a PR project that has since been completed. As Rick had mentioned, you'll see several of these projects from a funding perspective are unidentified and that at this point in time, we don't have dollars designated or earmarked or budgeted for these projects. But again, this is a great planning document for us. It's, it's an opportunity for us to kind of have a blueprint for future construction, future projects. And again, can't stress the importance of having a document like this when we do apply for grants or additional sources of funding. I know this, this document came in handy when we acquired land water conservation funds for Butterfly Trail. The same document was, was needed when we acquired tap funds for the bridge. It's eventually going to go over Blue Branch Creek as part of that, that Trails project. So this is a, is a common document, municipalities a critical document to have when you're seeking grants for projects such as this. But anyway, the PR projects, those are, are those from within parks. It's come from the Park Board, and we will answer any other questions related to those projects. If anybody has it, if not, I'll turn it back over to Rick.
So just kind of going over, I kind of talked about the downtown phase, two B, three, four, and five projects. As we move a little bit further down, we have James Rollo Sanitary Sewer Project, which is a sewer project here that's really kind of dependent on development of pretty much this intersection, the McDonald's, the OIDA property area. And so some of these projects, again, they're, we know that they may need to be done. They may need to be upgraded, but they may be developer dependent. As we continue down, we've got overlay projects, Eagles Parkway, the Mentor theme Capel area, and Stockman Drive and some adjacent streets. Those are our typical, every year, we do a street maintenance program where we do a Mill and Overlay program. So we put those in the capital improvements plan as well. And then as we go a little bit further, we have some water extension project along Billingham. That one would be a project that is mostly to provide some better fire flows and pressures as you go up north towards the Rosewood area. And then Greystone subdivision, that, again, that's road maintenance, Mill and Overlay type projects. I know the Planning and Zoning Board had concerns about making sure that that area was fully developed before we overlay those roads. We put them in, in a particular year, two thousand nineteen. If we need to move those, we can move those. It's a kind of the spirit of this, is the fluid document. And then again, we have Buckner Waterline, or Buckner Tarzney Waterline Extension that's really dependent on development that may or may not occur. And then we also have the big one, kind of the Water Tower Project. We put it out in two thousand twenty-two. That one's really dependent upon development, commercial development, a heavy user type industrial development as well as population growth as we continue to move up north. So those projects are, you know, again, we just want to make sure that we have a plan. As Shannon kind of talked about it, we used this document very heavily when we looked at the main street improvements and all the grant and tap funding and different types of, we had, I think, three different funding mechanisms that we used. And this type of a document, it's one of the base documents that we use when you fill out those applications to show that you have a plan in place. So with that, if you guys have any questions, any more particular questions, we'll be willing to answer those.
There was one brought up at Planning and Zoning, and they questioned the section of road that we were planning on doing a re, mill and re-patching on Eagles Parkway from Main Street to Kirby. When you go past that Kirby, there are probably half a dozen places where the road is heaved and made it fairly rough and made you look like it needs more attention than the part we're looking at doing the recap on. I don't know if that's something that you look in that, to that. I can see this, this winter when the snowflows go down, those bumps in the road are going to...
Yeah, one of those...
Somebody.
Yeah, especially on Kirby right there. What we look at when we, we put this in for Mill and Overlay projects, but keep in mind, we also look at whether or not some of those areas need deep patching. So what if we need to do some deep patching, which actually just costs a little bit more in terms of asphalt, that just plays into the role of the total length of the project. So these are, you know, we look at the estimates and the total length, and that's kind of where we go, our number based on the bids that we had the previous years. So we kind of estimate how much we think it's going to cost for some periodic deep patching along the way plus the actual two-inch cap. So the intentions would be to overlay it once we make sure any of the potholes are, in that case, you've got those joint separations, make sure that those are taken care of before we actually do the overlays.
Questions? Eighty-nine, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Also the same sign?
Six-zero, Mayor.
Next up, the Attorney Department.
Yeah, I just wanted to take an opportunity. I've been thinking about this since last meeting. And I've been here longer than probably anybody here, and I never have spoken. But I got the picture from Michael. But I got the picture from Michael, it was more of Pathways of Honor, our brick that was laid. And I got to thinking about that I'd really never expressed to you, all of you, how much I appreciate that. When Michael said something last time about sharing a little bit of the, your experience, I just wanted you to know that serving in the United States Army is one of the best things I've ever done. I got drafted in 1968 when I was in senior high school. Graduated college June 4th, '68, which was the same day that Bobby Kennedy was assassinated. July 4th, I was at boot camp for a letter. I, I went to boot camp, I was going to get in and out because I'd already been accepted to law school. But I got out and they sent me to radio operator's school, and I figured out that I was going to be carrying the radio. It was a good target, so I decided I might want to change what I was going to do. So I applied for flight school. And I told Michael, I wasn't smart enough to pass the math test to be a pilot, but I also failed the eye test. So I told everybody the reason I'm not a pilot is because I'm colorblind, which I am. My dad was a Navy pilot. My mom was a Navy nurse. They married, they met and married in Petesole. I served in the United States Army for almost, for three years. I got in as a first lieutenant. I was in military intelligence in Vietnam, in the south part of Vietnam, which was in Matron Delta, and served with some wonderful people. And those experiences are similar, and I know you find this hard to believe, but it's similar to my experience down here. Because the, the experience I've had in Green Valley has been fantastic, and, you know, people, my, my friends and fellow lawyers, sometimes my family will say, why do you do that? Why do you, why are you still doing that? Well, I do it because I love what I do. I love being here. I love the feeling I have when I walk in this building. I don't love you in that respect except as a community. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, if you might, thank you to the Pathways, and then thank you. The honor you gave me as Citizen of the Year this year was the best, most precious honor I've ever received. I've fortunately received a lot of honors as a, as a lawyer, but that was the most special. And to know that it came from you, to see you at the gala, to be able to take a picture with you, to share all those good feelings, and to brag about my experience as your lawyer means a lot to me. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and tell you how much I appreciate you and what you've meant to me. Thank you. That's all. That's the only report I have.
I've not said in 40 years.
I was a little, I was worried there for a second when we stood with Mike. I thought, uh-oh. I'm retiring on this.
That's what most people say.
I was, I was worried there for a second.
All right, next up, City Administrator's Staff Report.
We'll start with Mr. Davy.
Just real quick, I know on behalf of City Staff, I'd like to thank everybody that came out to our annual Mayor's Tree Lighting and Holiday Festival back on the 30th. Again, we had a great turnout. Weather wasn't as cold as it has been in years past, still a little, a little frigid, but not too bad. And I really think we had probably one of our better turnouts at, at this event. Everything went real well. Honestly, our, did great fires route and saying, and that's always a big draw for this event. We had, we had some great speakers. You know, when the mayor flips a switch and the lights come on, that's always a good thing, too. Pretty happy.
I, I was on strict timers this year, though, since, since the one switch didn't turn everything on.
Oh, yeah.
Better have it down to the second, where all the lights come off at the same time.
Yeah. We had people positioned in several different places to try to hold out. But anyway, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and helping with that event. And lastly, as we do every year, here coming up, the city provides a Christmas tree drop-off site to those residents here in Green Valley. That will open up December 26th, the day after Christmas, and will run through January 8th into 2018. It's always back here in the parking lot here in Armstrong Park, right close to the West Ball Hill is where the, the drop-off site is. So just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Mr. Royal.
To give you guys kind of an update on our guys, we're preparing for snow events, and we've pretty much prepped most of the equipment. We have one vehicle that we're still working on, but the guys are trained. We have about 200 tons of salt available. We have 4,000 gallons of calcium chloride available. And here, I think this week, we'll be sending out in the water bills a kind of notice to people that are living on emergency snow routes, that in the event of a, a snow event, to make sure that their vehicles are off the streets. Just so, somebody who may not know, we do have a first, second, and third snow route. We're updating the map because we're actually adding some of the new streets from Rosewood and Woodbury that are not on the current map. And so once we get that, we'll get that posted out on the website. But first streets are essentially your, your main roads, your Buckner Tarzney, your Snai Bar, your second streets are your residential collectors, and then your third, third route streets are all, most of the cul-de-sacs and residential streets. So just kind of want to let you know, give you an update as to where we're at, and, thank you.
Kathy Bobb.
I just wanted to give the board an update on the finance department. We're getting ready for year-end, which includes finalizing and processing the invoices for the end of the year and closing our purchase orders. We also reconcile all the payroll records to make sure the W-2s that we sent out in January are correct, and verify all the Portable Care Act reporting information to make sure those 1094s and the 1095s that have to go out to the employees are correct, and reconcile the information for the 1099s that we send out to the vendors. Keeping busy.
Chief Starbuck.
To items you weren't aware, on Thursday evening, the 21st, maybe the first time, a Green Valley police group participated in the shop with a cop program. And one of our SROs, Danny Ives, was totally responsible for doing the research and recommending that. And he had the support of Target or Wood Springs to be supporting us with a small grant. And if that's successful next year, that probably is a full grant. Right now, after we put it out, we have 26 young people that were submitted and qualified. And we have so many that we wanted to take, have a whole intention of Green Valley officers that are volunteering. And today, I sent the invitation to more, more officers from Buckner and Lake Ladawana and Lumcap to admit anything like this. I've had it before in the past, a very important thing, particularly officers. Joe Galston is actually, all the kids will come here that evening, and he will transport them all over the Santa bus. Obviously, they'll be waiting over there. And out of that, the small grant for Target, we were just overwhelmed by the support from the community and a lot of private donations, but it's large ones from Lida, Palavetto, from, from the State Service. So we went from a $500 target grant currently, we have a whole $4,300. Which we need to help certain, take a young person and let that shop and get about $150 worth of shots. So we're looking forward to that, hopefully that's a clear advantage. Secondly, you probably noticed I was out of town all last week. This was the yearly Missouri Police Chiefs Association Training Conference in South of Jeff City, 525 police chiefs. And it's actually, I enjoy it because it is, in its, all those conferences, they really throw some interesting stuff, and it's been very helpful for me in the last three years in making the transition. And they gave us updated stuff. We spent almost four hours just on legal updates, because just trying to keep abreast on new changes in Missouri statutes and how it applies to the officers. But they had some other excellent topics. I sent Ryan, our IT coordinator, today, they had an excellent presentation. I was realized how much a problem nationally increasing cyber attacks, these techno-terrorists that are doing it and they're targeting city governments, and they're getting in, totally compromising the IT systems of city governments and police departments, oftentimes seeking a ransom. And then we had some good information on, updated on issues and techniques in dealing with mentally impaired and some of those people that we deal with, that it's just hard to know what to do with them. It's a lot of vehicle labor training. I, I tried to get all the officers in the armed, on stream, including, and this information would be great for our CIT officer, Officer Schratt, before I got heading that up. So I just wanted to pitch, I wasn't completely out, completely out of the loop, and I got pages and pages of them.
Chief, real quick, if I can ask a question. What, when is that shop with the cop?
Thursday evening, September 21st, and I believe the bus and the kids are supposed to be here either 6:00 or 6:15. And we'll take them over there, all the officers, most of the officers will be over there. They'll be here for them. Target will have it all coordinated, we run through the store. The goal is to try to let the kids have fun and trying to suggest, a lot of them I've seen it sometimes at Target, they're not buying gifts or anything. Sometimes I see visits, wanting to take the time, you know, if you have a chance, you should sample it some. I think it'd be wonderful to be, I think you're adorable.
Thank you. Mrs. Ozenbaugh.
I have three things tonight. Big night up here. So I'm sure you all are aware, but just a reminder, as we've been talking about election filing starts tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., and we're asking everyone to come through the front doors, and I will have a form there to sign your name, your date, and what time you were there. And that's how we will place candidates on the ballot. So that will be tomorrow and run through the 16th of January. Also, everyone sitting up here should be getting a notice from the Missouri Ethics Commission. They will start mailing them out in January for your personal financial disclosures. So we just have to let you know those are coming and be watching for those. And I believe they're due back in May at some point, so take it upon yourselves to get those completed. And lastly, we just need to have a quick discussion to talk about Christmas Day, because we have a meeting scheduled for that day. So we need the board to give the direction on canceling or rescheduling.
We're meeting.
There might be assistance here. Expect to see. Do we have...
No.
Do we have any first reasons?
Correct, yeah. We've tried to set up the last two months' worth of meetings to conclude business if necessary with this meeting for the year.
I mean, if we don't have really the need for anything, any support, okay? Just waiting until, what, January 8th? I mean, stuff's been pressing, everything comes up. We cannot always call, especially if it needs to be, but if there's nothing on the radar, just plan on January 8th. Any motion for that, or anything? So I want to entertain a motion then to...
Cancel the...
Cancel the December 25th Board of Alden meeting?
So...
Questions from Alden Coleman, I have second. Second, Alman West, any discussion? Aye, non, offer to say aye.
Aye.
Also the same sign. All right.
Right, and finally, I just have a few things. I wanted to remind the board that we have staff holiday parties coming up Friday, the 15th, this Friday. We're going to be having lunch catered by Mr. Cook, as he does every year from Salvatore's. So I want to say thank you very much, Jim, for that, since we won't get a meet for the rest of the year, but staff always looks forward to that. And when you recommended possibly barbecue, there was a collective gasp in City Hall. And it was a resounding yes for Salvatore's, so thank you. And then the city staff, Christmas or holiday party is going to be Friday, the 22nd. That is going to start, I believe it's 11:30. Did, did we get the final word on that, Ken?
I think it's 11:30.
Yeah, 11:30 on Friday, the 22nd. Encourage all of you to come and be a part of it. It's a fun time, good time to interact with staff. We play some fun games. Sounds like we're going to be doing Family Feud this year for the staff game, and we will include any elected officials on that as possible. I will be playing Steve Harvey, so I'm going to get my deep voice and mustache out for that.
Actually happened at 11:00.
Okay, 11 o'clock. The only other thing that I wanted to mention is just, we've come out of kind of a, a busy marathon event season. We had Trailer Treats and then the Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting, both which were well-attended events. Both took a tremendous amount of time and effort from staff, from Sarah Netto to Shannon and his, his staff, the Public Works, the Police Department's assistants, the VIPS. So I just wanted to say, they did a tremendous job. I want to say thank you to all the staff members, not just here, but the officers, everybody that helped. So very proud of our staff, very proud of the work that they put in, and it shows in those events, when the residents come out and, I mean, just record numbers. It was amazing year for events this year, so that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, the Board of Alden reports with comments. Alman Arnold.
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Be willing to see you again unless you come to one of the dinners. But thank you for past year's service you've given, all the good work, hard work. It is appreciated, and sorry if we don't see you anymore.
Oliver Totten.
Well, I'd like to say that I was totally impressed with Price Chopper, because I got a call one day and told me to go up to Price Chopper North. Five ladies were from Green Valley, and they informed us that they helped the kids raise $1,500 for the middle school band. Well, four of us got $100 credit card, and the other one got to go shopping with a basket. I got a credit card. But I was so impressed. You know, we need to do something because they said this is the third year, and everybody in there, none of us had ever heard of it. But these were, they kept it so close as a kid, and they put that in. It was wonderful to see the support that was given to us. No one knows about it, the sound, what you were doing. But...
And I wish everybody a very blessed Christmas. I was tickled because we got us activity scene on Main Street again, so that made my day. And I've enjoyed and I'm learning the things, and some things that I always don't agree with, because I think every, some people make the life garden. So thank you.
Coleman.
Yeah, first of all, I need to start off by, Deb, I voted a certain way, just, I appreciate you coming out, I appreciate the information you provided, and I, by no means was that any personal side. It's just the way I felt I needed to vote, and I thank you very much for coming out. The other thing I would like to congratulate the city on, the Christmas tree lighting, I, I thought we had an awesome turnout, and the fourth and fifth grade flyers were awesome. The, we had Frank White out, and that was always appreciated as well. So I thought that that was an awesome night. And then last, to the Parks and Rec and Shannon and all the people that are involved on the board, thank you very much for that. thank you very much for that ribbon cutting. I thought, I think that bridge is awesome. And I think it's a great piece to help connect both of our communities, the Woodbury and Rosewood.
Still have all your fingers?
Still have all my fingers from that, those sharp scissors. So, awesome job and Merry Christmas to everyone and have a safe New Years. Thank you, Mayor.
Alvin Headley.
I would say I had a great time, very Merry Christmas tree lighting. Just trying to keep up with all the cookies and hot chocolate, surprising how fast that goes. And just wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and happy and sick New Year.
Alvin West.
I have a question, but first I want to say happy holidays to everyone and particularly the group that decorated Main Street, it looks beautiful. My question is, how was Mr. Johnson's request handled?
Matt, so, does Matt got back with you?
Oh, he's still researching it.
How long is that going to take, I mean? For two weeks from Christmas.
What was the request?
The request on it. His...
Solve this, tell us to pass it on any evening.
In front of his home while he gets things ready to distribute.
Have you visited with Matt about it, him, any...
I sent an email with what we had done before on it, the next day after the board meeting. But I've not heard anything. We haven't heard anything in two weeks. I'm disappointed and I think we should have had an answer before now.
We will circle back.
Should have had an answer within at least three days.
We'll let Matt know that.
Well, it's now, Mayor.
I didn't hear what he said.
Yes, I'm going to follow up with Matt.
I will follow up with Mr. Gary and find out what his recommendation is based off of his research.
In that same vein, what happened with the fencing for the autistic boy?
They did, uh, getting a fence that met everything, right?
Yeah, the fence was actually complete when the gentleman came to the, to the meeting. He was just frustrated with the process and the requirement of having to go through a variance.
They didn't have time to get a variance because the labor and materials were donated for a proper fence that met code. So, they constructed a fence.
When are we going to have an answer for Mr. Johnson now?
I will follow up with Matt tomorrow. And Jim, did Matt happen to brief you on the variance process for the Santa Bus, being parked overnight?
He did brief me on it, yes.
Okay. Did he give any indication of when he'd have his legal opinion prepared?
He did not, but I'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, if you would check with him tomorrow and I'll follow up as well, and the three of us circle up, we will then provide a memo to the board, be it from...
For tomorrow.
Fairly, depending on that.
As soon as I get the legal opinion, I will give it to you.
There was some action possibly willing to be taken by the board on that issue. And depending on that lawyer's answer, we may need to call a special meeting. He did, but I think it should have already been handled at this point.
Is there, what's the need for a special meeting, what's your concern specifically?
To vote for a resolution for a variance from the board. Variance would have to go through...
Yeah, we can't, we can't, we can't offer a variance at the board level, that would have to go through the board and zoning adjustment.
I think I could, it's already one.
Are we talking about the Santa Bus or the thing?
The Santa Bus.
Santa Bus. I think the discussion was... So, I forgot if it's part of variance or not.
Right, because it's part of the traffic code and there's a piece of it that's in the land use code. So, the question was, what is the process that we're going to have, that he would have to go to to request a variance? That was instruction to staff as well as Matt when we discussed it.
Because in theater, he's not, okay, it's always moved from the ten days anyway, so he hasn't...
Correct.
There have been violations anyway.
Well, we violated it before, but it's moved from the ten days.
It's always moved from the ten days, really, obviously.
Sent notice of violation.
We haven't, that hasn't been through in several years though. Alright, we'll figure it out. Whatever.
Albert Baman.
Just a couple of things. Last meeting, the school board approved the expansion of the Early Childhood Center. So, look for that project to start in January and conclude sometime midsummer. And similar to what was stated a little bit earlier, there'll be two board seats that are in this particular election cycle. And there will be at least one new face on the board going forward after April. And that's all I have.
Next up, the mayor's report. And I'll have to ask everyone that's listening here for a second because I probably wonder where in the world I'm going with this. But every morning, on my way to work, I leave the house and I look to make sure that the three wives that are there, my baby Jesus, and Mary and Joseph. And the reason I do that is because I've seen numerous reports on Facebook regarding vandalism, thefts, and other things like that, you know? Our police department can't be everywhere, I mean, they just can't be. And it's not, they're, you know, some people want to blend in, it's not, you know, their fault what's going on. More than likely, the, you know, individuals that are, you know, responsible for what's occurring. And it's not just, you know, Christmas time, we ran into Halloween with pumpkins and Halloween decorations. It's not just, you know, it's summertime, you know, and things like that, you know, my... My oldest stepson has been, you know, victim of some nice things written on his car, sometimes about me. So, it's just, I think it's, you know, time that we really look at, you know, it's not just our community, it's other communities. But I don't want to say that, you know, oh, we're just like other communities because we don't want to be just like other communities. We want to be, we want to be Grand Valley, we want to be better than the community, so... But that being said, I think it's really time for us to look at increasing our youth activities and youth services and things that we do as a city to, you know, hopefully curb some of the things that we're seeing. And hopefully, at the same time, if we can work with these, you know, at-risk adolescents and kids, as they get older, we won't see, you know, we won't see, you know, snowmen flashing, turning into, you know, house robbery or worse vandalism on someone's house or vehicle. So, Ryan and I have been, the last few days, really brainstorming and trying to figure out, you know, what this looks like. And I'm not going to take credit for the name, or we can give the name, what you do credit for the name, Ryan. I told you, we gotta have a name for this neighborhood.
What if they don't like it?
What? I like it, we're going to see where else. I do too, so, we're looking at starting initiative, we're going to, and if this is horrible, just tell them, we'll change the name. But calling it Grand Valley Yes, as in Grand Valley Youth Engagement Program. So, I'm not asking the board to, you know, say, oh, we need, you know, we just did budget. So, I'm not asking the board to, you know, look at, you know, budgeting funds this year and looking at that. I think the first thing you need to do is form a steering committee with, you know, officials from the school districts, officials from our churches, residents, people from the police department, budget officials, you know, business owners. I really want to, you know, get it out there to get a steering committee started to see what steps we need to take as a community and what steps us as a city need to take to really help curb these things. I mean, I know some people may say, oh, it's, you know, vandalism or a little bit of theft, but these are bigger issues too. I mean, we have, you know, as kids get older, you know, we get, you know, increased drug use, prescription drug use, things like that. And these are things we need to, I feel that it's kind of our responsibility now maybe to really step in and see what we can do. A lot of people say, well, it's the parent's responsibility. I mean, truth is, as an educator, I see it, I mean, yeah, it's the parent's responsibility, but some of these kids aren't getting it from their parents. So, you know, I think it's, I feel like we're obligated to really step in and try to avoid some of these things. And just some of the ideas I'm thinking about, you know, I know other communities have youth outreach programs in their police department. That might be something we need to look at adding, you know, so when, you know, one of our officers, you know, catches a kid out at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, right now, it's, I mean, Mr. Cook, I reckon I'm wrong, but right now, it's, you know, if we find them multiple times, we would cite the parents. But, I mean, is that really helping that kid out at all when that kid maybe needs a mentor? Or, you know, just needs someone to sit down and talk to and, you know, things that I think, you know, our police officers can offer. And I think our businesses will get on hand and, you know, get on board and do a lot of mentoring there. I think everyone up here would probably be more than happy to be, you know, a mentor. Uh, just things like that, you know, if our Parks and Rec department, do we need to look at, you know, increasing programming geared more towards adolescents? I mean, I know one thing, we don't have, you know, we used to, but we don't have an outside basketball court anywhere in Grand Valley. Is that something that the city needs to look at adding where we can do programming for, you know, night groups and things like that?
Sure. When the Baptist Church put the walls up, I was grateful. However, you can still hear it when it knocks on the walls when they're going to... But you had a lot of people, you'd have to put that someplace not next to house.
Right, we wouldn't put it right next to it.
Okay.
So, I mean, that being said, we've, you know, compiled a list of different activities, you know, like I talked about cemeterian programs, you know, crime diversion programs. I mean, this is all things that I want this, you know, steering committee to look at, put together a plan for us. And then really, it'd be something we would look at, you know, budgeting for next year if there were aspects that we needed to budget for. And I'm sure, you know, we would get a lot of businesses on board and they would probably be more than happy to donate things too, so... I just wanted to throw that out there that, you know, that's something that Ryan hadn't talked about. We're going to start getting the steering committee ready, so if anyone would like to, you know, take part in that, let us know. And we'll reach out to other individuals as well, we'd get that going. It's something we'd really like to kick off after the first of the year because, I mean, other than that, I don't know. I mean, you know, today is, you know, deflate, you know, it's splashes and platoables, you know. Next week, it could be splashes on with tires and something that worries me is, you know, I, we see, you know, people getting upset about these things on Facebook and other places. And I don't want individuals, you know, getting upset if they, you know, catch a child in their yard doing something. I really hope that, and I know, I'm not, you know, living in a dream world, but we're not going to stop it altogether. But I really hope that we can make a dent and, you know, we've spent a lot of time on economic development, infrastructure and those types of things. And I think it's time that we really start, you know, branching out and spend some time on some other aspects of the community as well. Probably off my soapbox now, I'll figure it out. For the moment, but be looking for that, something that I'm going to spend some time on this year and really get kicked off, so... Uh, that's all I have. We have, we do for personnel.
Yeah, for personnel, number thirteen and legal.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion into adjourned adjuction session for legal and personnel. Alvin Coleman, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussions? Officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alvin Arnold.
Yes.
Albert Totten.
Yes.
Albert Coleman.
Yes.
Albert Headley.
Yes.
Alvin West.
Yes.
Albert Baman.
Yes.
Alright, we'll adjourn adjuction session.